You also said the town master, the present town master, implied that it was his responsibility. Sorry, that wasn't the present town master, but the marathon manager felt that it was the funding for the repairs may not be necessarily the responsibility of our support. Similar, but very strongly different. Mr James?
If they had done it when it first happened, it would have been a couple of days' work on some concrete. The time that this issue is made to sort it out, half it's going to be pretty gone.
My dear. But we all...
You'd have thought your pension might be kicking out somewhere along the way.
You mean talking people?
It's not even talking, because I've got a gun in my boot. It's unbelievable, isn't it? That's still going to sort it out.
Exactly. Do you know our county councils? They're a lot of great, high-level marathon managers. And I have to say, dodging budgetary responsibilities comes fairly low on my list of forward everything.
At the end of summer, who's going to be responsible? Let some kid fall asleep and break your leg then. Who's going to get sued for it?
You take the council.
So is that about four pensions? Does Shaw's health insurance go out there this summer?
I don't think so.
Somebody else is going to jump in there and I'll die breaking a neck or something.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And over to Shaw, please.
Yes, it's only one item, very important. It relates to the pedestrian crossing at Strand Farm School. Hopefully, the pan roads will be, sorry, the galero routes will be in place in the next few weeks. It's set up in January as part of the major configuration of that crossing. As a pattern, I've been reassured by highways that it will be in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so if there are any questions or anything to raise that's a common answer, then I'll go to the public participation bit. Is anything anyone want to say about anything else?
I'm going to speak about item seventeen on the agenda, which those here says, to consider a proposal for P S T C to organise a funding food and activities programme to assist the children of the community in the cost of living crisis. As a pound lot councillor, I wrote to councils this week. And in that letter, about child poverty in the local area, which is astonishingly high. There's an area for pound lot to Kilkington which goes right through the centre of Bude. I would remind you when you said there are two towns. So this includes the Stratton side of Bude, where we have twenty-five per cent childhood poverty. That is the third highest in Cornwall. This is hidden poverty, but it's there. Now, I don't speak as a pound lot councillor tonight. I speak as a teacher in the local school up the road. And I have to say to you that there's massive hidden poverty around us. But there is that mix. I teach children who go for ski holidays every year. I also teach children who sleep on the floor. And we nurture all our children in all our schools in Bude, Strand. But there are times when we can't. And those times are during school holidays. And in the school holidays, hard-pressed parents have difficult decisions to make. All of a sudden, children who had free school meals or children who had guaranteed hot meal with just a few pounds at a local school, all of a sudden, in the middle of a cost of living crisis, they have to budget whether they can afford extra food from the local shop. And children go hungry. And I have to say to you as a teacher, I was reading something by an educationist, a very influential educationist. Probably know that, and I'm not against it, but a lot of his ideas founded the way that he teaches and all of that when he grew up in Cornwall. And he said this, 'I didn't understand anything because of my hunger. I wasn't dumb. It wasn't a lack of interest. My social condition didn't allow me to have an education.' Simple things like food, activities enable our children to flourish. And I can say to you as a teacher, thirty-six years' experience, that things you can do now for children allow them to flourish as adults. Simple, practical things. But if you don't do anything, nothing happens. Now, I said in my letter to you, I wonder how, whenever we have childhood poverty, or just thinking about feeding our children on the agendas of town or parish council. And it's wonderful to see that you have it on your agenda. Thinking about the resources that you have as town council, because we're thinking about this in the parishies, but we're aware of how little you can do. But you have facilities. You have logistical support. You have connections with the local schools. You could make a real practical difference. And I have to urge you, and say this is urgent, school holidays are approaching. We have a cost of living crisis now. We need someone like you to set something up that won't just run this year, but will run next year too. And possibly at Christmas, because I can tell you, we've got a tough Christmas coming. A lot of families out there in Bude, Strand. So I wanted to basically say, as a councillor, I will support this. As a teacher, I will support this. As a parent, I will support this. And basically, if you take action to assist the children in our community in the simple ways that you have suggested, I contend it will have a profound positive effect on their engagement. I urge you to approve whatever motion you can make for this. And once you've approved it, take action.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anyone else?
First of all, congratulations on being elected. It's always good when we have an elected two years consecutive. And obviously, congratulations to the deputy mayor. Because that's a useful thing to have, take the strength and learn a bit more. At the annual town meeting last week, there was a conversation about newsletter. Now, I realised during the Simstand that it is obviously about what you do at the meetings. And if you come to the meeting, you know what's going on. That's why I've come. Because unfortunately, depressed, either can't come, don't come, or whatever. So you can rely on reading anything. But then I come. I change my view a bit with depression because, you know, I come to meetings when I can and all that stuff. So I have a reasonable idea of what you want to do and all of that stuff. But I still think there probably are people within the town that would like to have a hard copy. Because the world is not completely digital yet. There are people like me, for whatever reason, that do that stuff. I've got all sorts of things like that in it. So I would just actually consider maybe a system where if you've got something in the local group saying if you want a local council newsletter, just get in touch and we'll make one available to you. That was that bit.
I think Paul had made a really good suggestion, so Paul. And we've been looking to, he suggested an idea of getting people to get in touch as they wanted, send to them. And we've got lots of them, but it's certainly a conversation we're, yeah.
Unfortunately, what's done physically doesn't necessarily translate.
I see.
Newsletter, of course, it's a very beautiful format. We are talking about how we get the items that we publish.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah, because as I planned, when you get a a hard copy, it gets to the bit where if you were going to, it says, click here. And obviously, you would take some backup food, but I think it might be appreciated. Presumably, the housing needs survey will be done by postwork. That can be posted.
Yes, certainly.
That's good. And I had a look at the artwork for what we're going to do with the tree, bearing in mind that this is Cornwall, I prefer the option which is better to cover the drawings. I thought they were most appropriate for what some people don't believe we're in Cornwall, but we are, of course. I'll just make a pre-announcement. In forty months' time, it will be two hundred years since the Ucanau started the trade between you and Hostelley. This was most of the work. That was the eighth of July, eighteen twenty-three. And what the people, the directors of the company did, they actually travelled from here to Hostelley by foot. Now, if you can imagine, that would have been both two in line banks, including Hawke's Head. And when they arrived at Hostelley, they'd bravely entered town with a band that had a conquering hero. But in any case, so the next year, they, Ucanau, I'm hoping to sign and hope to do something to celebrate and party. One of which will be to invite the members of the two banks to the convention. So we're hoping to have it in Hostelley, which would seem to be appropriate. But if that can be arranged, it would probably be, it's a if you do it very well, it might be important.
I have my birthday as well. I have a birthday.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I do, I do, I do. I think I mentioned before, the crossing from the bottom to Uyghur Hill to get across the bridge to Strassens. Because we look for a better and it's, I'd say, a lot of the hands trying to get it, I say. It's not too bad to go the whole way. Maybe you have to listen very carefully to what it was said. I did write to one of the Cornwall councillors, I think, because they had a response to it as to what they were going to be able to do to provide some assistance, like some news or something, so you could see what's coming. Or crossing or some, to slow the traffic there. Because it's, it can run a corner, say, quickly on bikes and all sorts of things. And I don't know how you go there after the town council can use it.
Yes, Shaw, if you have some time.
Yeah, I think the subject matters that have come to your councils should be directed to myself, Opeza, and Nicky Chobak as councillors for Cornwall. We refer to someone he wrote to, which I haven't received anything. So you have a project, a question. Well, he was someone expected for that. Would you want to go and give track account with the staff that Cornwall councillors should be dealing with? Please direct them to self-examining, that's why. Yeah? So I understand that issue. Because, you know, you guys got a lot to do with it. But they can't deal with it. It should be Cornwall councillors, that's why. Particularly with the traffic issue. Someone anywhere we own, have more cats or we can have town cats or I think you've directed to the Cornwall councillors. So we, sorry, Shaw.
I'm always happy to pass things over, so it's absolutely fine. Yes?
Just quickly, I'm only thinking that Redwater is a listed building. So therefore, Cornwall council has a statutory responsibility to ensure it's up. Or I, it's great to listed.
Ah, right.
I just wish to seek clarification on something which Mr Jewell raised, if that's okay. Because he asked if the housing needs survey would go out in postwork or not. And that's not, it's not my understanding of what the process will be.
So a letter will be issued, everything that's solved. And then in that will be details of how you can use it digitally or by paper. And we will then make those, and it might not be that clear.
Right. So with your opinion, a paper copy will be available, but the initial letter will be an invitation to complete the survey online.
Or by letter.
Right. If you wish to complete by paper, you'll have to come to the council.
You have to come in and enter.
I can do that. I don't do far away.
You can pay us, you can write for us, we bring one to you. Or you go to live, you go to see what's up.
Okay, so is that, everyone, the public participation? Yes.
Because you're sure, sure, it's more than a quarter.
Well, we're getting to that. We're using that on the agenda. You've jumped ahead there. Yes.
Oh, no, we can, we can.
Yes, sorry, I missed one. Sorry, did you miss? Yes, yes, it was, sorry. Yes, I did put, I was going to speak a little bit about Bree. Did you want to know, yeah, we've got that phone down the agenda, so. Sorry, you skipped around, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, no. And, okay, so, on turn twelve, then, receive progress report on the council's project and agree any associated actions. And Frank is going to be a sort of update on that one.
So, we're anticipating planning decision to be issued to us in early June, very early June, as the press report. But this can't happen until the reassessment by National News being completed. And that's due to be received by Cornwall council by the seventeenth May. So it goes there directly first, doesn't come, unfortunately, directly to us. And they can then start presenting the issuing conditions to us. And if we receive consent, obviously, still unknown at this stage, then the county architects will be able to undertake the preliminary work that they need to do, which will inform site investigations and seeing them undertaking that work. And we originally had that work sorted for January. And now you're doing site in July to undertake that work. It'll only take one day. But we will have to cordon off the existing site and the new site. And notices we've got up in base have seen advice of not to go near it because there will be significant work done and dig up parts of ground. This will enable the architects to find those other plans and everything ready to prepare to act tender in August this year for contractor. Running parallel with this, it's still the legal agreement with Cornwall council. I wrote four, it's actually three, so I'll use that. So we still have three separate licenses and agreements that they work out between officers here, officers at Cornwall council, our external lawyers and their external lawyers as well. And they have to be finalized and approved before we can issue our tender in August. So the question is on there to have those resolved as soon as possible. And then the question, if you are, can you give a recommendation? And so I've just popped in a recommendation to essentially allow us to press on, given the time constraints that are going to be in place, and approve that we go to tender stage in August this year and the work required in advance of this if we receive planning consent and the legal arrangements are received in time. So obviously, those two things are critical part items. And this will improve the extension of our external PM and QX as well, who obviously we need to advise the nation to continue.
Thank you. Pretty complicated. There's no questions on any of that. So it's my, can we do any more actions for this?
They just do a pre, you know, to that stage.
Do you want to check that out again or? To approve going to tender stage in August twenty twenty-two and the work required in advance, the planning consent and the legal arrangements are received in time. This improves the extension of our PM and US deployment.
Second, second, which one?
Yeah, okay. So for those in place, please. Okay, I'll go to number thirteen, I'll move it to Mike. Okay, so Mike is going to give us just a little update. Number thirteen is to receive progress report on the real sports facility project and agree any associated actions. I'll just crank it after you, Mike.
Basically, we set up a youth group, had a really good response, good the community, young, pretty old. I think even slightly older than myself. Some really positive discussions with them, great ideas, really grasping the whole environmental side of things and everything like that, which is nice. You know, just suggestions like having a pit, hedges, concerned walls, reduce the concrete, all that kind of stuff. I just, you know, stuff that obviously people see in cable, then it's down, you know, it's out, it's some deal that is on the planning stage. It's nothing happening about G S D F, I wouldn't have thought. Not at all, in fact. But yeah, basically, just really good community engagement. You know, there is nothing to decide at the moment. We need reports, we can't do anything without reports. You know, it's a nice positive community project that is up the line. Right now, smoothly.
That's all right. Thank you very much, Mike. And I'm going to crank you now a little bit of the details.
So obviously, we will be briefed on as any problems table. And so having mapped out physically the size of the park, we then see, being able to clarify the exact size, which will help when we come to the port. So being mentioned as well. For those who don't know, just briefly, in two thousand, the cable was made and went down by a ninety-nine year licence, which prohibits us from moving building over on or within three metres of the cable either side. But it's still, I might say, it's still a decent sized space there for us. I work progressing on the additional reports that are required for the site as well as the legal transfer. And we're working towards tendering for the project in October this year for a design builder contractor to be on site and starting in January next year. Additional project management support has been briefed for the project and depending on the outcome of the general item seven, which will approve, we will then be commissioned to cover the project in my absence this year to pass the tender stage.
Yes, Peter.
So just out of the tiniest concern, after listening to what Frankie said about the surveys, are you intending on changing the scope of the surveys so that they only cover this smaller area?
They just have to dig on the ten metre track of the entire area they can do inside. So any ground investigation will have to be outside.
So just to come back on that, I believe, even though there are those restrictions in place, that it may be possible to move the cable. Because when I spoke informally to subsidy lately, Grace Hotwell Cable last year, I did mention that there's a cable running underneath where we thought the escape path might be. And they said, it's not a problem to move it, we can do that. So it's not impossible. We're certainly aware of what we've got, I believe. But we shouldn't restrict ourselves just in case it can be done.
Just to add to the cables, so it'd be great to know exactly who we've got the agreement with. So it fits the cables that I think are, which is yellow, which comes from British States or the Panjouping Crossing from Ireland. Basically, like, one of these cables is already developed and it's actually been part of being ripped up. So it could be that one, this cable that goes under, could be more adaptive cable that was delivered in two thousand. And the other thing is, if it was a Panjouping Crossing company that owns now, they don't bust, basically. So it depends what the licence lease was, see if it actually gets transferred to the new company, which I believe is now called a block guy this year. Of that, I'll hear about. So, yeah, like, it'd be great to get, if we can at least get the group to actually handle that licence in our hands as well, so we can be fully understand it and see what sort of possibilities it might be there. That'd be awesome.
Just on that note, I think you have to seek new advice because
Yeah.
I'm not going to right now, but.
Okay, lovely. Thank you. And if there are any other questions, I will move on. So now to number fourteen. I'm going to go to Frankie about, and then just wait over there for a while. Frankie's got things to say on the housing needs survey.
And so hopefully, you will have site now, and perhaps they will do the survey. And I had some final correspondence today with the office of Cornwall council dealing with this who are planning on issuing a significant press release to do with their working collaboration, specifically with us as a town council on this issue, and looking at how then that transpires with other town councils and local parishes in the county. So that's, I'd say, a really great news story, which will go out similar times to when we look to issue the survey. So it will be open from the sixth of June. And all residents will receive a letter, sorry, not residents. Homes within the Beechworth Parish will receive the letter, which invites them to complete the survey. As you've seen, so they can either scan the QR code on the letter, it takes them directly to it, or alternatively, with like a paper version, you can call us, come into the office, it's a library, and you can either handle it, give a copy, and they can give it back, or they can send it in by post, or simply did, and then that will be transferred digitally on the system, as in my case. And I suppose the last thing was just to say that the output will then hopefully form the relationship going forward with the planning committee to look at what we can do. So hopefully, you can help encourage everyone to complete it because we need to beat their responsibility, which is fifteen to twenty per cent. So aim high, because I want to do better than that, and I know that you're there, so.
Thanks, Frankie. Okay, I think it's only this is.
Yeah. So back eleven months ago, when we first formed the planning committee, this was probably one of the first things that we discussed on the agenda about declaring the housing crisis in the local area, which is fine saying it, but then what do you do about that? The feedback we were getting continuously, really, both from government and from Cornwall council, was it just don't have the statistics necessary to tackle the crisis. And it didn't seem really to have a solution to it. So we considered it, obviously, as a planning theme. We wrote a letter, and the letter really was designed to engage other local councils to one vague noise about the area of housing crisis. It's not just in you, but it's across the whole of Cornwall. And the truth is, it's across the whole of the country. And it affects two areas in particular, and we've all been living with it now for some time. So it was a great resort by the committee to one, do that. And only today, we've had another email today from the St. Green Parish Council who have done the same thing on the basis of what we've done. And I think we've now got at least half a dozen other councils that have pretty much done exactly what we've done. I'd personally thank Frankie for the work that she's done with this because it's really grown into something we didn't really item initially anticipate. What we wanted to do was gather statistics. It's not about gathering opinion, this is about finding out the facts, this is gathering data. Because what we're being told by government is especially the way out of this crisis is just keep building more houses. Well, the truth is, we don't. We've got enough houses, we just need to have the right ones in the right place with the right people. in the right place for the right people living in them. It's fine building another three or four hundred houses, but if the majority of them end up in second homes, it's achieving nothing. So therefore, what we're trying to do with this is actually establish what the real facts are, who's living in which house in this area and what they're used for. Because with those statistics, we can then go to Cornwall Council, we can go to the government and say to them, look, what you need to do is devise a policy to get the right people in the houses we've already got, not just to keep building more and more houses without the infrastructure to support them. So we've got to stop the conversation that the government seem to want to continuously have, which is to support rich developers and continue to buy houses that people can't then, sorry, build houses that people then can't afford to buy, rather than actually relocate the housing, stop them already got and encourage people to do that. And I believe that the very grassroots level, this is the start of that process. Now, if we can, Cornwall Council, for the first time that I'm aware of, this is the first time they've done a survey of this level of detail and this nature. They can, they clearly consider it to be significant because they're prepared to make a significant statement and say that they're doing it. Now, what I'm hoping is that the rest of Cornwall will then do this. This will then end up as a national piece of work that will effectively change the way the government policy works in relation to housing. Because the truth is, it's the only way we're ever going to change it. Because for as long as people are encouraged to continuously use their houses to make money, then we're never ever going to get out of the problem. So again, I'll reiterate what Frankie said, we hope that all of us to ensure that we get the maximum amount of return for this because it's the only way to make a difference. So all of you here, to spread it out to your friends, make sure your family know, okay, for us as councillors, keep banging this drum for the whole time that that's out there to make sure we get that turn, twenty percent is hardly near enough. Okay, it needs to be, at least be, certainly I hope to see higher than that. And the truth is, we're hearing it from our communities almost every day. There's not enough houses to live in, they're too expensive, right? In that case, they, we're empowering the community to do something about it. So they really do have to get out there and do it. So I, you know, totally recommend we should talk about it.
Offer for your council sessions at your holiday weekend is that we can provide some paper copies to give to residents. I'll just obviously reiterate that we would stress that it's for you, Stratton Parish, and that obviously is, you know, quite specific to us and having that respect. So it's anyone who lives or owns property in New Stratton Parish.
Thank you both, and thank you for the work on this.
Yeah, I'll give a last, along those lines, bear in mind what we ran down from the last consultation. Do we have the right things in place this time of the year? Yes, our provision of voting and only being in one voting issue.
It's not, not votes.
Well, I've got one, so.
Yeah.
It's not consultation, it's not, oh, actually, I would say it is not.
But what I'm getting at, Tony, is, and I agree with you, you want fifty percent, but if somebody fills in ten, it's a fifty percent.
There really isn't.
So if somebody says one, we hurry on, we hope you can just bring up and ask for a paper copy. How we check our costs and is not fitting in a second day.
So Cornwall Council own the survey and it's also, it's all we lose, we're sent it in. So it's up to Cornwall, Cornwall Council own this, okay, we're doing it on their part. So, so Cornwall Council will be responsible for validating the information, it's not counter.
What I'm asking is, is there something in that?
Yeah, they put measures in place they're comfortable with, to upfront and then have the reports.
So the data will not be manipulated.
Data is definitely manipulated, we don't do that either, so.
It needs the Cornwall Council to validate, it's not for us to lie about, it is my fault. Okay, we, we're doing the work on behalf of Cornwall Council, they will do the statistical analysis and they will produce the results. So absolutely nothing to do with us, all we're doing is facilitating by kicking off in the first place. Cornwall Council own it, it's not to do with us.
Okay.
We just need to, yes.
Yes, indoors.
I'm sorry, making that proposal.
Thank you. So all those in place. I think. Sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay. Number two. Thank you. Sorry, I've scribbled all over my agenda if you want, and I'm having a hard time giving you a yard. So number sixteen. To celebrate the artwork to be commissioned for the planning committee and plan the next steps. Um, now Philip Owen's going to say her words on this one.
Thank you. Um, I'm not so sure why this has come to me, but I think it's because it, it was picked up by the committee. But just to remind you that since the tree fell on the day of February, an enormous amount of work has taken place. The trees obviously cut up and rooted inside. The triangles now are made safe and usable. Uh, lots of branches were, um, taken from the tree and quickly they'll take root and we've got hundreds of cones saved. We also had nearly two hundred suggestions initially from the public about what we wanted to do with the wood. Um, majority of residents at that point suggested either benches or tables or an artwork from the site of wood. Um, the tree is now a works unit with a main trunk in one piece, which is about twenty three tonnes of wood, along with that till the three tonnes of cement. We then had a decision on the seventeenth of March that Tom Douglas from New Purpose Movement, C I C, and Jonathan Walter from Barn, which is a private company, uh, were allocated the majority of the main trunk, or assistance and cut by these, these monumental pieces. And they then cut the trunk into boards, season it and create some street furniture, which was a preference of the residents. Apart from the initial cutting, the trunk into small pieces, all the work would be done in their cost of the SC. And then the street furniture produced would be given back to the town. So that's what's happened, happens, the majority of the wood and that sort of thing. But there was this call, the initial call when the tree fell from the residents, that they wanted an artwork produced as well. So subsequently, what we've done is we've put out a call for artists to write us proposals for artwork, either making the main trunk or small branches, and those proposals were received from them. And big thanks to Cal because it's a, it's a real job to put those proposals all in. A lot chasing around and everything else and we've got the proposals. Now, once we decided on our preference for an artist, if we decide that tonight, then they can work with the farm and then divide the trunk up to when we might work in the street furniture. Um, anything else that's left over after that, because there are several tons of other little pieces, the facility manager will arrange some way by which members of the public or community groups and schools can have some ease of relief to do something with it. And we've also issued, um, small particles of wood to the World's Crime and Championships. Um, what we want to do is make a home, places of trophies. So that's. When we were thinking about the artwork, what we decided to do was ask the public of their preferences so that could hopefully inform our decision making. Unfortunately, although the public in the first instance seemed very keen on the idea of making smart work, subsequently, we haven't had that much of a feeling from the public over, um, expressing preferences. I think we've only had eleven or maybe twelve. Yeah, so a very small number of the public actually come forward and expressed a preference in terms of the proposal in front of us. And I understand is that all of those preferences were for the Celtic cross. That was the, but soil feature was not representative, so it's, you know, I think we can finally take that on the cross. So we can either, I think today, we can either look at these proposals that we've got and state a preference for one of them, or we can perhaps think about this again, think about whether, um, because, you know, the proposed, we've got one universally, we'll work with the public, whether we want to do something else. But it is my view that if we do decide to kind of put on the process anymore, we should let Tom do it and get on with doing that, that's up to the tree. I mean, the tree's still in the yard, it's, it's not a problem, it's not a question of sending money, but it isn't, you know, it's a big piece of wood that's in the way and that's material. So that's, that's important to me.
Thank you, Philip. Yes, Katie.
Um, so obviously there's a fair range, uh, and also we've like very different budgets as well. For example, the, the cross was an proposal, but they were the one that would make it and would need to go out and source that person and to grab that cost of fee. Uh, so actually, uh, maybe what, uh, is, what we should do, uh, as, uh, now is to al- almost like prioritize, um, based on what preferences we should have and almost basically sign a budget, right? Like to the certain extent, like what sort of budget, because there might be a few in here that might be squeezing that budget. There's also the physical volume of the wood as well, because it means that one of the pieces is super tiny, for example, as well, and it's like, oh, yes. Uh, so, uh, I, and that, like, I don't know how you would like to try and do that process of prioritization in anything like this. Uh, but, um, yeah, so we could literally just like put on a figure, put order and then just go, do we agree to this order or not, I guess? Or do you think that might be a bit of a?
I'd sort of suggest maybe something slightly different from that. I think from what Philip was saying, I think that's right in so much as that, the guys that have currently got the wood, develop those and do that work. I'm not entirely sure there's an immediate flush now to make a decision on any of these proposals. And I would perhaps suggest that this now becomes an agenda item for the oversight committee to monitor as we move forward, um, so they keep some of that. And perhaps if it, you know, you're in a position again to maybe do another public consultation or another discussion piece around it, rather than, I think, try and do it before council now, I think it's going to be quite difficult, but not any much.
Yeah, I do agree.
I, I, I think, you know, perhaps a little bit more thought needs to be put into it in the way that we might want to develop that.
Yeah, okay.
I was basically in the same vein, I think that, um, twelve people, it's not enough, given how interested everybody was at the beginning, um, then we try and get out there a bit more, um, kind of like get more obviously happy as how much it's been, it's seen who the idea is and then get a consultation. It's I think.
Katie, so a little way that we could do before that is literally just assign the budget now, uh, so because I don't think the oversight committee can sign a budget?
No, I think this is, yeah, this is a new piece of work outside, so you would have to, um, you could actually allocate some reserves unless, well, unless we can find pretty existing money for it. Ultimately, the council will need to assign a value, whether you want to do that now, delegate the committee to do that, or whether you want the committee to go away, work something, they have to come back.
I, I would personally, I'd prefer it to be that way now, that's the normal answer. So otherwise, we're literally just putting a number out of the air.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think that's right. I think people probably guess what size we should be building this month.
Yes, yeah.
And what I would suggest is, as Philip says, um, maybe possibly if I were to, to be a bit specific, we're talking about to, to take those bits of wood to, 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 to where the news are more relevant, these, these or whatever, you know, let's get that aspect in the room.
Yes, okay. So, um, those, so, yes. Yes.
I couldn't hear out from what she said. I couldn't watch it all at that. I, I was interested in this, I want to know exactly what's happening. She's got a microphone, I wouldn't actually use it. I think you could be right for that.
Okay, if you, if you solve this, I could have obviously thought that. Yeah, it's particularly, I don't know, it's, I'm sure you've got a right to. Okay, so back to the proposals.
I propose that we defer, defer that to the oversight committee.
There you go.
Yeah, the oversight committee, the discussion box, that we authorize. Let, uh, to.
Yeah, authorize Tom and Jonathan to commence.
To work as, as a discussion.
Yes, as, as a, for your reasons.
I think it's stressing more. I'll screw it. Thank you very much. Okay. And number seventeen, um, is further again. Oh, yes, sorry.
Well, you move on.
Yeah.
If you have opportunity, you could have had those designs out outside.
Yes.
At the meeting last week, last week.
Yes.
You've had all in, well, people here this evening, you could have had an all of that and you would probably trouble your.
Participation.
Well, yeah, let, let it happen on Facebook.
All right. Okay, thank you. Um, so where were we? Number seventeen came up. To consider, yes. Yes. Okay, so it is to consider a proposal for B S T C to organize and fund a food and activities program to assist children in the community in the cost of living crisis. Open to be admitted to say the law.
Um, it's very hard to follow Steve, Steve Haynes and the amazing speech that he made about it, but I'll give it a go. Um, I think we probably all remember food poverty campaign started by Mark Rashford in the summer of twenty twenty. His aim is to highlight the issue of food poverty among children who would have received food school meals if they'd been in school, but had received nothing during holidays and the best COVID lockdown. After a massive petition and thousands of sought restaurants, cafes and individuals, including many year reviewed, donating food and money, the government agreed to provide funding for children to go to school. Originally, the funding was for one year, but in twenty twenty one, the government extended funding for another three years and named it the Holiday Activity Mission Program, known as H A P. That can live, but that's, that's obviously it's known as H A P. Cornwall Council has allocated one point sixty million hand funding and used it to set up the Time to Move Project, which finds suitable providers across Cornwall and allocates in funding to our activity programs for children on preschool meals during the school holidays, all of the activities, including meals. However, the availability of these programs relies on providers in local areas coming forward to make an offer. And in New Stratton, during Easter holidays, which was the first year of, um, first half of funding this year, only one provider came forward and thrown in one day. So there was a day of football activities at a youth football club. However, that one day attracted sixty children to attend, twenty of whom were able to food for preschool meals. I mean, as we know, now, the financial situation for children's families is even worse than it was in twenty twenty. The cost of living crisis is upon us and upwards of twenty percent of children in the local area are in poverty. That means that potentially four hundred local children or their parents may not have access to either food or are being forced to make choices between having energy in their homes or eating. We are fortunate, this council has a very healthy financial situation, so unlike the schools around us, we can afford to investigate the feasibility of setting down a food and activities program for summer twenty twenty two, open to all children in the area, not just those on preschool meals. And we can afford to underwrite the costs of the program, should we not be able to access funding to cover some of all of those costs. I've spoken to head teachers at all the local schools, I've spoken to the food bank and to people who have run. I've spoken to head teachers at all the local schools, I've spoken to the food bank and to people who have run similar programmes during school holidays in Buckland, Southend and Hamford. There's no question that there is a need for a programme. And there's no doubt in my mind that if you have the determination and ambition needed, then we can set up a programme for the summer, even though time is short. Therefore, I'm asking you to sort your proposal to employ a project manager to get the planning going as soon as it's feasible and to come back to us for implementation plan. I know that we can do this, and I believe that children and families in this area deserve nothing less.
Thank you. So just a few questions to your speaker. Uh, so in the proposal, I was wondering if there's any way you could explicitly add something about what the Cornwall Council will access the funding for this, because I'm assuming that's what Project Manager would do, would go, you know, spy or something. But I'm not about literally adding, as I said, how council will be. Well, I would do this.
The um the Cornwall Council programme, Time to Move, was run by a chap who's in Marion. And he's told us, like you know, that he really likes us for something, because he's looking for providers. So I don't think that it would be a special job for him. I think what it'd be a question of is us designing a programme that could enable him to provide the funding. I think it's interesting. Yes.
Um, yeah, it's clearly not there, there's a need, absolutely, say that. And I'm slightly concerned that whilst obviously Marm Church or Poundstock, so we're we're talking about the local area. We've got Poundstock, Kewhampton, Marm Church, saying they will allocate resources. What I'm concerned about a little bit here is that we're potentially using the New Stratton taxpayers' money to then support children outside of this area without any commitment financially from these other areas. I do believe that it would make more sense that we work collectively as a group with Poundstock, Kewhampton, Marm Church. So it's not just Good Strattan Council, this is collective activity and everyone commits appropriately to whatever level of funding that they can provide. Because that, to me, feels fairer to the to the taxpayers of Good Strattan. Um, because of, because obviously if we're saying that effectively it's going to be first come, first served, children can effectively come anywhere. And then what we're doing effectively is subsidising the other areas. So I'd rather see a bit more of a commitment perhaps from the other councils rather than just rough idea of our resource. You know, I'd want them to work with us specifically in some way. And likewise, you know, we're talking about employing a project manager, but I I would suggest that perhaps a better way forward is to create a group, a collective group made up of all of these councils. And it's done together rather than just being us as a council.
Very interesting, yeah, thank you, Tony.
Yes, Sean. Yeah, I just want to firstly thank Philip for actually putting in a lot of time and effort. And yeah, and then fashion into this proposal. It's the kind of thing that when you read it, it makes you think, oh, okay, yeah, we can actually do this. And I do believe that this needs to come from the council locally, that's not the biggest first. And I understand what you're saying, I don't want to be kind of in any way impacting taxpayers. But I just, I I feel like we've got, we literally have a budget to do this. Um, it's a complete crisis for families that need this type of provision. Um, and if we don't do this, I don't think any of the other parishes have the micro resource to um put in a proposal like this. So if we need to start it, as the Strattan Council firmly strongly, that we need to start that. And once that process has started, of course, all the other parishes will be on board. Because we're not just an isolated island, we are a huge and like widespread community network. And yes, people cross borders to go to schools and people don't live in the parish and then they send their children to school in the parish. That completely doesn't matter to me, this is feeding children who may not get hot meal in the summer. And I think, yeah, it's just incredible that it's been heard in front of us and yeah, that's all I can say. So that was it.
I hear what Tony's saying, but again, I'm I'm completely comfortable that these Strattan councils should take the lead on this. I think hopefully when when we get it up and running, other councils locally will join in in any way they can. And I I don't think this is likely to go away anytime soon. Um, and so I think we ought to be prepared for a long run on this and and take the lead and and bring up the worst as as we can. But I think, um, you know, time is short, there's no doubt the need and I think, you know, let's go again.
Thank you, Simon. Yes, I'm ready.
I did say it, of course, I guess.
Yes, that was my call.
Um, yeah, I understand with that. And again, what I'm trying to do is take emotion out of it, because obviously, you know, it's evident that we need to do something. But a collaborative approach, I'm not simply doing it, I understand we've got resources to keep it off. But the other the other councils and the other taxpayers in there in those areas have to take responsibility in the same way as we do. It's not reasonable, I don't believe. So we expect the taxpayers of Good Strattan to take on, you know, what is potentially a greater burden on this issue than the other taxpayers and the other parishes. And and what we're not doing, of course, is what we pledged to do with virtual these things, we're not going to consultation, we're not asking the local population, we're saying we're going to spend substantial sums of money, of of their money, for something that I'm not saying is not worthwhile, but we're not asking them. And also, what we're also saying is we're going to spend your money effectively on on other parishes. Now, that's unusual, you know, we don't ordinarily do that. Um, and it would be interesting to see what the response was if we were to do that. So because a lot of times I say is I'm taking emotion out of this, because you can cut down the emotional back. Oh, I have no problem with spending the money, but I think it needs to be equitable. And it needs and it needs to be clearly a collaborative approach from the start.
Um, go to Simon.
Um, I I I think I I really thought about it, I know exactly what you're saying. I think personally I wouldn't have an issue with it, but I understand exactly what you're saying from a kind of accountability point of view. Um, so as a solution, I I think it would be reasonable to have really interest that, you know, where we develop the project manager and they're on the initial one month period, after the role of them in that one month period is to establish exactly how it's going to work with those other councils, that's a specific job. And come back to us and say, you happy with it working like this? Whether that's, you know, financial, contractual, whatever it might be, um, to to figure to figure it out even there down the path and saying, I know they're not saying this, rather than saying no, because they don't know how this is going to work. Or yes, I don't care how it's going to work, let's find a way down the middle and have that project manager work out. Yeah.
Thank you. Peter.
Yeah, always very difficult to talk on subjects when it's innovative subjects such as hungry children. And, you know, no nobody would ever say that trying to resolve an issue of this nature wouldn't be something that we should engage with. But what I do want to say is, is that the half funding, and I expect I might be correct on this by Castle purchase, but I believe you can get in the wrong from time to time. But I I believe it was aimed at, um, what's loosely described as providers, so effectively private enterprises, um, doing these support pieces for children and people within our community. And and that's effectively how a lot of these models of social um value are delivered through government funding. Um, it's very rare for a council itself to deliver this sort of programme. And I do have massive concerns about our own capacity to be able to do this. Uh, I have no problem in terms of spending some money on a project manager to explore the possibility of encouraging private enterprise to come forward to be the beneficiary of half funding, which is the way I would consider it to happen. But for us to be direct delivering social services at council here is a massive step and fraught with complications, um, that I couldn't even begin to imagine, such as child protection issues. But there's egos waiting that we have experience of. So I I've no problem at all in exploring encouraging somebody to come forward to deliver this, throwing ourselves beyond my my cap.
Sure. Great point, so I think, yeah, but you're absolutely right. The 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 way that Cornwall Council has designed this Time to Move programme is that they're looking for providers to come forward to provide a day for a a session for activities with a volume. That's what they want providers to do. Firstly, no providers have come forward for Good Strattan apart from this one day I talked about. And secondly, the Time to Move project have have told me that they'd be very happy for Good Strattan Council to come and provide it. And we, if we do that, we aren't spending the taxpayers' money or Good Strattan council residents, we are spending the money that was allocated to Cornwall Council to provide this facility for children in school holidays. But that is what we need the project manager to um to examine how how we should do that. Yes.
Can I?
Yes.
Advice, because in one sense, I did lose my hair when this was put to, though to be tabled. It is a massive undertaking and I think expectation management, personally, I'm not sure we can do something this summer. I don't know, but I think what's, how it's been tabled is take a first step and examine. Because yes, there are huge implications around child protection, safeguarding, Ofsted registration and all sorts. And it's well beyond the capability of existing staff myself. And the first step is getting the right person on board that knows these things to even do the feasibility study and project plan. Um, so I think the the timing table is extremely tight to deliver something. But if the council wishes, that is doing work you undertake and it will lead you to what can or can't be done and when it can and can't be done. But I'm sorry, expectation, I don't, the headline should not be, this is being done now. Because until we've done more work, we can't even say what's achievable.
Yeah, and I was literally going to say about the same sort of thing, basically, what a manager will do, they go out and they'll see how feasible it is. They're going search for providers, they're going, so maybe they go to the group bank and see if they can, like, get something on the group bank or something, etc, etc. They'll get people who have those certificates in place, because they're not going to suggest to us, you guys need to get this, 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 and get all this stuff by a certain point, because that's not the point of the project. And they will turn around to you and say how risky something is, and they'll turn around to you and say how risky it is. And say it's not possible, that's what, you know, we'll do. So I wouldn't worry, um, basically in terms of the that sort of, we must decide that that moving to do it, we decided that we're going to, we support the concept on a principle, we've allocated the budget and we're going to be taking on a project manager for a month to do the initial sanity check. Really, and again, I would like to have a process. I'm just making sure I have my process, yeah.
And again, it's just my own application, because it feels like we're sort of going to one thing or another here. Because what I've got written in front of me is that the town, that the council supports the principle of writing a food and activities programme to assist the children and the community in the cost of living crisis, and allocates a sum of forty five thousand pounds in reserves. That's not what I need, because now is that actually what we do is we deploy a project manager for a month to tell us whether it's feasible to do it or not. So that's not quite the same as what's being put in front of us, because what we're being asked to do, and I I checked that it was proposed about the the money coming from Cornwall Council, but if it doesn't, we are undermining it. So if we don't get that money, we will pay it. That that's what I I believe we're being asked to do. So there is no guarantee that we won't, that taxpayers won't pay it. They will pay it if we don't get the money from Cornwall Council. So so what I'm seeing in front of me, what I'm hearing, is not necessarily the same thing. I'm quite happy to allocate the money now for a project manager to carry out feasibility study, stop. You know, like, I'm not happy at the moment, not knowing any in fact, to get a council to a forty five thousand pound budget, undermining a project that I don't yet know is feasible or not.
Simon.
Uh, no, it's okay, I think that's good. Yes, sorry. I can't help thinking this ties in with what Steve said at the very start and moves on to the broader point of the community network part area. I think extraordinary work since we've gone agenda item, we've got somebody from a different parish standing up and saying the same thing. So obviously, the willingness to work together as a community network, I would assume, to change that, I would assume it's there. The second part is, a little could be, are we being effectively subcontracted to do Cornwall Council's work? That's a dire question to somebody that understands the reality of this.
Well, given that most people have just had to pay for that one day, if they weren't eligible for the preschool meals, that it was twenty pound a day, so the funding was there, the families still had to pay twenty pound a day. So where does that, where does that fit in with this proposal? Because twenty pound a day is a lot of money, I looked at putting my daughter in and I thought, I can't afford that. The 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 question to ask is, are we doing what, are we doing what the Cornwall Council should be doing? When Cornwall Council were giving this money from the government, all councils, all principal authority councils were giving some money based on the number of preschool children in that area. When Cornwall Council were giving this money, they decided that the way that they would allocate this money was not by themselves doing something, that they would ask providers to come forward. And those providers have come forward in their droves in Truro and Almat and so on, so for all the children in those areas. And certainly the fruitable and real children or big mothers who have got access to some. But in Good Strattan, those providers have a different kind of.
Do you know what they did differently than, did they hire project managers to do it? Or did they just go to providers and ask?
My, my, oh, sorry. There isn't a providers. It's not there.
We've got.
The schools. Well, I think some providers that we have expressed a different part of vision. Um, so there are people around, aren't there, because we've had a conversation about the fact that, um, there was a local high five, talks on cafe, we can reach and speak to, there are people globally that that is what project manager would do. But those people, those groups are not able to run this programme themselves. No, they're not able to, you know, and the schools also are not able to kind of run the cost of potentially doing this, setting it all up and then going through the loops of getting the money from the Time to Move. Uh, you know, certainly somebody like Paul Mishin probably hasn't got the, you know, the budget or whatever to do that. No, no. Um, the the person who ran the the football, um, if you if you were a recipient of preschool, you know, it was my understanding, you got it for your, you know, I mean, if you were, if you weren't a recipient of preschool, you had to pay. So that was how that was, that was allocated to doing, having preschool in other children and funded by the half funding. Doesn't, yeah, it's just it doesn't tally up, because if if you're, if only a small proportion of our community can benefit and the other proportion has to pay substantial fee, but with our council funding, I just don't, I just don't see how that half funding ties in with that. I mean, my my personal view is that I don't think we should be offering this to children who are of these sort of things. I think we should be offering this out to all children in the area. I mean, I'm not a project manager, so I'm not going to design this right here and right now. But in my discussions with the schools, they're very happy to sign those bits to families that they think um would benefit the most from it. And we could use commerce channels, I mean, we wouldn't be putting things out on Face, well, my view is we wouldn't be putting things out on Facebook going, you know, come to this activity programme, we'd actually be doing this through the food bank, through the schools, through the channels where we already know, um, where the where these families are. And the people in the schools and people I can say encourage us to come forward and actually take advantage of this.
But we are trying to design a solution and it's extremely complicated. There are lots of number project and there's lots of work to be done on this.
I would say to you, if if you want to take some inspiration, I would say to you that in Hamilton, they decided two days before Easter holidays that they were going to run a programme. And they run it, they ran it for the first week of the Easter holidays and they had twenty to forty children coming along and they gave them a meal and they gave them some activities and it took them two days. So that's not a very, it wasn't a very big or comprehensive programme, but they did it and those children got a meal. So, you know, we can, we can sit here and trip ourselves up over all the complications and all the bureaucracy and all the partnership work and everything else that we want to put around this. That will only mean that in this summer, the children in this area won't have a hot meal and then have a smelly day. As we as we work through this, that's my view. Thank you, I'm going to go to Tom.
Um, I just wanted to remind you that the council of Goshenford, it has been a council of Goshenford.
Just to remind the council of all, it has been a council branch council of several of its tables, and it has created cooperation between parishes, we have committed a vote on that. I fed you that. I have to tell that. The other part that is, you know, has been made up, we have resources, yes, we have resources, because banding properties in our Irish area pay something like two hundred and twenty pounds a year, council pay seventy eight, Mount Church about fifty or sixty. So we need to be conscious, I, you know, I'm not trying to doubt that the, you know, the kind of virtualist project, but we do, we need to be conscious of the fact that we are spending our taxpayers' money. And I, again, I understand the time constraints, but certainly fully support the concept of working with other parishes to, in the community network area. Yes, and that was one of the points made by councillor Ames, that the council branch council, he was, you know, needing to work, to work with the, to network on this, because it isn't just the children in Ustach, it is also the other parishes, and if we can work together, that would make a beneficial.
Thank you, Simon. I'm going to go to Peter.
So the reason why we are in the correct position to do this is, so in our grant grants, which I've done quite a few of now, the people are tentatively known as the people that have collaborations, that's a consortium of people that are formed around something, with a lead person, and that lead person does own the right, because normally when you go for a grant, you need to spend the money first, they're given receipts, and in a quarter of a year later, you get the cash back. So for the food, things like that, they literally need to have, they need to spend the money before they get the cash back. Whereas we have got that sort of reserve, we have to do that sort of thing, if that's what the, what is needed, basically. If we need to go out and spend X amount of money on a project manager, and then they're also refunded eventually through this programme, um, Cornwall Council, then that's great. And that's what we're sort of aiming for. So that's part of the reason why I think we're in that sort of position, is because we shouldn't be seeing as we are spending forty eight hundred to this, as it said, it's allocating the budget to float to be able to do such things. And then also, as a project manager, see if it's feasible, have them to look at collaborations and things like that.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm going to go to Peter now.
I don't really want to disagree with the council, but every single grant application I've ever come across, you're not going to spend upfront. It always has to be the other way around, so I agree.
But yeah, but once, but once you, so once you've signed the contract, that's when you can spend, and that's when you get your refund back. Okay, that's what I'm saying.
And thi- this is really about the vacuum imbued of social providers coming forward to take advantage of the half funding. I have to disagree with another councillor. Sorry, sorry. There are lots of social providers active imbued that were very closely with the schools. They often under our radar, because they're working mainly with people who pay for costs today, but I think it wouldn't be beyond our ability to maybe make contact with one or two of these providers and see if they would be willing to create a programme that we could have some input into. So I've no problem with it working in that way. And I think there are maybe a little project managers around, maybe some of this audience here that might be prepared to work with this council on this type of social project. But I think actually, we'd do it relatively quickly. We'd do this next week. I think is there what we need from looking at, we're going to go for it. But the initial part, I agree with councillor Gibbs, I don't think we should be agreeing to forty five thousand pounds, I'm very concerned about that, but a couple of thousand pounds for project management to give us a sentience check and find out social providers in town that might be active to help us out. Absolutely, yes. And Matt, how, very quickly?
Thank you, Peter. I'm going to go to Paige and Sharon, the council right now.
Yeah, I think this is happening, I think this happened this summer. I think, of course, the willing increase is such a shock to people, and I've seen first time experience with best managers, because unbelievably, not just a few people, but some based parents in the right places and everything like that. On that note, could we not add something to the purpose? Also, we say that the council supports the principle of providing food activities programme to assist children in the community in the cost of living crisis, and allocates a sum of forty five thousand in reserves. Should a project manager deem this feasible? Would we add something like that? Because I don't want it to be, I don't want it just to be going out to people, and we won't do it ourselves if somebody, a provider doesn't come forward us, because it needs to happen, and we'll be sitting here in two months, voting against it. Could we, is that something that is possible?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, in one way, I mean, at the full, at the moment, what's on the table is the principle, because the detail does have to come, the detail can only come through a qualified project manager that can put something together, be it whatever the solution is, be it internal or external.
So we're not committing to spending forty five thousand, should the project managers pay if we have to?
No.
I'm still, I'm still reassuring that the whole risk about resources, it's nothing else. It even takes time to find a project manager. No, we, again, I don't want to make it, we've got a very full programme of things to be done at the moment, and this is just another, you know, big task.
Three things to do well, probably.
So finding more, so, but I want to say, that's my portion of, if you go ahead on this, I would really have to turn that, deliver this this summer, unless a lot of things would have to fall into place. But the first, you know, the important pieces of work of sourcing the right person with the skills, with the right brief, if you want to work with other parishes as well, it says there's a lot to be done. So just make sure you're clear around that. But in terms of your, I believe, if you go ahead on this, you will have to, you know, you have to see where it takes you. You can only do one set, it may take longer, we'll see that. It will have to come back over, it cannot be done, it cannot be delivered just on this one, because you haven't enough detail. There are so many risks that you would have to agree, if we were to be a provider, there's an awful lot of risk, you as a council would need to be very clear that we have got rights. Because, no, and again, that's my job in terms of advising you. You must make sure, we must act in a legal manner, a lawful manner. We cannot make things up, we cannot take those, you know, take risks, especially when we're talking about children's welfare. So, you know, and my, whoever, whoever does that work would need to convince you that whatever, whatever thing you put forward is completely right and proper.
Okay, Tracy, you've just answered, how do we go today then?
Just a minute, the proposal's on here. Can you, what, the proposal, can you just have the proposal that it is, take out in the cost of living crisis and allocate a sum of forty five thousand pounds, take that out, just have agreed that the council supports in principle of providing a food and activities programme to assist children in the community, that the project manager is commissioned for the initial one month to produce a feasibility report and draft the implementation plan for the council to determine the time and scale of the deliverable operation.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. I'm just going to go to Dana.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think, obviously, um, well, it's going to be, we have, we have to go, we're talking about, we're distracted, killed, we can help everybody else. During school time, a lot gets catch school buses and get taxis in because they're having to travel and everything like that. If we have a central activity going on, not everyone's going to be there to it. Lot's of times changing the holidays, school buses aren't available on the holidays, there needs to be either lots of different activities that the project manager needs to look at, or there needs to be a transport to, you know, if you're holding at school, it's, I have a school bus, it's going to come today, so you can have two sessions, maybe one in the morning, one in the afternoon, something like that, because people are going to probably have a lot going to travel.
No.
Again, the council, the council class can get into these places.
Thank you. Yeah, very good point. Sharon? Yeah, that's a really good point, it's something that we talked about a few weeks ago, about how do we enable that community response? I wrote down something here, because I tend to take everyone's opinion, and that is, the best emergency response is a local response. That's a quote from a woman that I was reading by a woman who is a master on emergency responses to disaster. And I would argue that the cost of living crisis and that whole thing that has been kind of coordinated by the effects of COVID in our community is absolutely, say, when it happens in a disaster, and we can do anything to help and facilitate something rather than nothing happening in our community, then we need to be able to do that. And I think we need to, because it's.
Thank you, Sharon. Now, Tom, you asked.
Certainly, definitely. I think what Tracy said is definitely going in the right direction. I think in a sense that the forty five thousand really won't know that, because it's a bit of a grand hurry at the moment. Let's, let's get the wheels in motion and do the best we can. If we only have a day at the last, the last day of the summer holidays, then that's something that wouldn't happen anyway. And then at least we're in a better position to assist this to happen in the future, except that it's going to be a long time soon. Once we make it known that we're interested and supportive, maybe it will encourage the other communities to get involved and providers to step forward with that reassurance that we're behind them. But I think, take on the call, Keen's point, let's, let's move with kind of appropriate haste, but not, you know, we can't cut corners on this. Let's, let's get the wheels in motion and get something that's likely to be sustainable. If someone comes up and takes off their hands, they want to, but if they don't, at least we can build the knowledge we need slowly, or in a measured way, to, you know, to provide this in all, if all else fails. Because, you know, youth does suffer from a lot of this kind of thing, and we're a bit of a hole in, and all sorts of provisions that more densely populated parts of the county will come to take care of. So we do need to maybe step up, but I think there's a lot that can be achieved by us saying loudly that we're, we're hiding and we're, we're moving forward, just talking about a really helpful action.
Thank you, Simon. Tony?
Entirely agree with all that, makes absolute sense to me. And I'm now much happier with that, I think, as a, as a full related plan.
Yep.
I suppose the only other, the only other sort of element in the room potentially that is not part of this and not part of the discussion, but it's already been mentioned, this isn't going anywhere. We're going to be living with this for five years, ten, so are we, are we talking about commitment as I was saying, it's something that is long term. That's fine, I don't got a problem with that either, but when we come to setting the preset next year, with people that already don't have any money, and we're as a council as a, if we're going to raise a preset by four percent, in order to fund this type of activity, how are they going to think about that? Because you can't have, the money's got to come from somewhere. And if we're going to do this as a long term commitment, somebody's got to pay for it. And ultimately, it's going to be the taxpayers who pay for it. And very much so, I've seen our centre of council here, there's a definite difference in what the other local communities are paying relatively in relation to what we are. And if we're talking about incorporating a large area, we can't feed the whole Commonwealth, you know, let's be honest, we can't really, we really shouldn't be feeding anybody outside of our own town, because that's, it's the town of April. You know, so we, we have to be honest with ourselves in relation to this. It's absolutely adorable that we should want to do it. There's a tremendous amount of detail that needs to be thought about, very much as the town car spoke about. If we're going to look at it in principle, allocate the right amount of funds just to do that initially, and perhaps, like you say, if the best we can get out of it right now because of the time scale, and get one day done in August, brilliant. But if that gives us a springboard to do other stuff, that's great, but if this is not going anywhere. So if we're going to commit to it, it could end up in the long term.
Excellent. I mean, go to Simon, and then I think we're getting some ideas, so then to Alex.
I agree with what I think you've had, it feels.
Okay. All right, Simon. Alex?
No, just off the back of it, Tony, and also just sort of thinking about a bit more, I think we definitely need to just kick this off as quickly as possible, because there is that, that real need for it, as soon as it makes a decision, as soon as possible, to keep something going. I think it needs to be, a conversation, we need to be talking to the likes of the Food Bank, because they are at the front line and have access to the most vulnerable people in our community, and so they will be able to allocate the food to the right people very quickly. So we need to be looking at this, as you write, the more long term, we need to be partnering with the likes of the Food Bank to support the most vulnerable members of our community. And, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so.
Can I just, one more thing, just to be really radical about it. If you really want to make a difference now, with very low mix to the council, you know, my, my thought is, and you want to make a good difference immediately, allocate twenty thousand pounds to the Food Bank, just do that. Like, because they're the experts, they know people, very much like you said, they can allocate the right stuff in the right way.
So I don't need to interrupt you, but just speaking from my own experience for a second, so I'm not on benefits, but we struggle. We're a working family and we scrape it by every single month. So I wouldn't be helped by the Food Bank. I'm not on their radar, but I could go along to some sessions and get help in a way. The Food Bank would not have me on that list.
Would we not, if we're going to give them that amount of money, would we not set conditions under which they're used? Surely it would come to us, if we said, here's twenty thousand pounds.
And they not put, you said, to the Food Bank?
Well, we, we don't, I suppose that's the point.
I'd say I'm not supposed to be a deal with that. And the way that the Food Bank operates is the same as the way all the Food Bank operates, is that they take the flows from, sort of, and deal with people like that. And so the people who are allowed to get food from the Food Bank is that group of people. It's not the wider community. And if we gave them twenty thousand pounds and said to them, we expect you to, to do something different, then I think that we would be asking the Food Bank to do something that's kind of outside their range, that we're not there prepared to have X wise.
Okay, well, we, we assumed we were going to run the holidays slightly. I like Simon's idea as a long term plan to move forward. If we want to make a difference immediately and we're concerned about the childcare, child care and all of that, we have all of that here in this town, I'm not going to accept the argument we've done. We have three schools, we've campaigns, we've sports fields, we have various sports clubs, EBS check hours. If we get out now, we get one of the schools and say, right, can we try to do campaigns now, will they do it on a card? I don't know. We buy the food, we go to the rote club, the sports club, the skate park, everywhere. Would you be willing to do a day up these schools, coaching kits, yada, 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 we set something up, we feed every child with cans up? The schools know who's got whatever the qualifying criteria for, you know, free school meals is. My kids got it for the first few years, I think, they're unqualified, thank you, Boris. But the schools have all of that information. So if we want to make a long term plan, let's do it basically what Simon suggested, and we've got, what, two, three months to set something up for the summer holidays, to buy a game, a week on two days. So if you want to spend forty five K, let's buy twenty pounds worth of food, and buy some coaches and cooks and do it.
I think it's a sample of the people who forget that we do it.
In reality, I'm a project manager, I think that.
And you know, you're doing, like, I, it's worth, well, I don't know.
It's more than that, I think.
Tracy, I feel like we are, yeah, going down a, you know.
Can I just answer that? I have asked the schools. They, they want to be able to support us, they absolutely would like to be able to provide some of the activities or even some of the venues, but they cannot run this programme themselves, they can't get through the, you know, the, um, setup costs and the big, they can't underwrite the costs themselves, they haven't got the budget to be able to kick this stuff off, to get the project manager in the process.
That's why I said, give them twenty pounds, give it.
So I want to go back to our original thing here, where we talked about project manager, Tracy's suggestion of omitting the adequate salary from the reserves at this point, because, yeah, I can understand why you think I'm comfortable, now we've not had a project manager involved yet. Can we propose that the council supports the principle of providing food and activities programme to assist the children in the community in the cost of living crisis, that the project manager is commissioned to call an initial one month to produce a feasibility report and draft implementation plan for the council to determine the time and scale of the deliverable operation? Excuse me. One second.
Absolutely agree with it.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, again, it's just the detail, right? So it's fine to, how much are we going to pay them? Right, if, if they come to us and say, yeah, I'm going to, it actually comes to ten Rais, are we just going to pay that? And who's going to decide as well? So now, because at the moment, we've got, a lot of us sitting on tables, the school council, who's going to do that?
So in a normal situation, would we at this point, as part of that thing, delegate?
You would allocate a budget, which is not actually what you pay them, but it's the, I suppose, the same sort of money. You would allocate the budget, which is not actually what you pay them, but it's the, I suppose, the same sort of money to which you would be prepared to commit to that.
Yes.
And then you'd have to go through a process of finding the right person and negotiating with them.
Who's going to do that?
Again, I mean, it is a problem, because I hope councils would help, but ultimately, only us as staff can actually commission someone, can actually write a contract, as it were. It does take time, there's lots of things to do.
Okay. There's also dedicated outsourcing companies for this, because you literally say, I need a project manager, and they just give, you just straight away, you just straight around one of them, and they're like, oh, stop saying things like that.
Straight away.
So it's not, you need staff, yeah. But yeah, it's okay, like, I don't know, because we talked about this in terms of IT as well, we talked about it in terms of the costing of staff time as well. It's a staff with committee thing, because it's like, but how do you, it's a cost of, it's a cost of process for it, isn't it? So, Mike, did you have a suggestion?
I was wondering, you've got Ian, so, okay, thanks.
I was waiting, Shaun. Okay. So, in this, we could get some, right, then, into an allocation of the budget for a centre project manager, for it to be correct, but more than this.
I could do the proposal £10,000 for one of us. Yeah, can I suggest £2,500 for one?
So do we need to put any detail in that group? So are you going to set a group up? I mean, you know, what, you, you know, what I'm asking is, I suppose, is there going to be a group of councils that are going to do that? Or is it just going to be left to people?
I thought you had a proposal that we would ask the childcare provision forum to, to, to...
Okay, that's a suggestion. Yeah.
So I did hear you read that out, but I just wanted to seek a bit of clarity. For me, direct delivery of a programme of activity, these councils are non starters, no way you're going to be able to do it. But in the proposal, is that clear? Because if we're looking to try and engage a provider, absolutely happy to vote for it, but I'm...
Yeah, because it's a principle of, if the project manager comes out and says to us, okay, we can only manage to do this, then that is, that is all we do.
I would hope that this would start with all options open, because if there are providers that can be encouraged and commissioned, that, and using the half money and such, that would be the most obvious and quickest solution. So I'm hopefully not going down just one track. I think the whole point is whoever comes in is to understand the full plan and say...
I would expect a series of options to come back, surely.
Yeah, but again, this is what takes the side, or whoever we commission will need the brief written. It's what we need to do.
Okay, so a proposal that the council supports the principle of providing food and activities program to assist the children of the community in the cost of living crisis, that the budget, £2,500, is allocated for commissioning for one month of project manager, sorry, to produce feasibility report and draft implementation plan for the council to determine the timing and scale of the deliverable operation.
Can I just add one challenge?
Yeah.
Rather than principle of providing, can I say principle of commissioning?
Principle, okay, support.
Committing to do it.
Okay, that, that one.
Well, even commissioning or providing, because I don't want to rule that, providing it ourselves first.
But I think that's even, I think by saying commissioning, you're not saying you're not going to provide it, but we're not committing ourselves to providing it either.
That'd be us commissioning us to do it, or something like that. Yeah, as long as that's, you know, that's an option in a few points.
Oh, good, commissioning, again, you want to keep your option, right?
Okay. So, can you talk to me?
Can I just do a couple of tiny... The budget of up to two and a half thousand, unless we need to spend it all. And I think limiting it to one month, maybe a lesser, it might be done in a week, it might be done in six weeks.
Okay.
No, no, one month, or, or...
An initial, yes. Project manager, so a budget, okay. For an initial...
I don't think that makes sense to me, because how can I allocate budget to two and a half thousand? We can't expect the project manager to be working on it for six months.
For two?
So, so we're saying it's...
I mean, so it's, he's not reporting back in a month, it's too late anyway.
So, so leaving it as a month, I think it makes sense if it's two and a half thousand pounds.
But this is going to come out in the wash, you know, that.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't guarantee, it may take, it could take three weeks to... And whether they work full time on it over a period or...
Okay, right, I've got another go here. So, well, probably not. So, that council supports the principle of commissioning or providing a food and activities program to assist the children of the community in the cost of living crisis. A budget of up to £2,500 be allocated for a project manager to be commissioned to produce a feasibility report and draft implementation plan for the council to determine the timing and scale of the deliverable operation.
Oh, second that.
All those in favour?
Would that be the original proposal to be withdrawn?
Yes, if you're telling me to do it, yes, yes. Got to get down. Is that okay, everybody? Thank you very much. Okay. Number eighteen, over to Shaun, to consider the actions that the town council may take to support youth pride.
Do you want a mic, Shaun? I'm going to turn it up from my seat. Okay, okay. And so just to, like, start this off, I'm, sorry that I didn't get to, like, to start this, if you, I'm just going to relay. So, this time last year, youth rapporteur to our council voted unanimously to approve the following statement. The S T C celebrates a diverse community and supports inclusivity, fairness and equality for all. This statement still stands, it is simple and it is powerful. Unfortunately, on a global and local scale, LGBTQ plus individuals continue to face violence, harassment and discrimination simply for living their truth. As joining councillor for diversity and inclusion, I believe that this year we can be stronger, louder, louder and more visible allies to our LGBTQ plus community. With Pride Month fast approaching in June, I would like to propose that the town council resolve to do the following. Number one, fly the progress Pride flag for the duration of Pride Month for all B S T C flag holes. This includes locations at Caster Grounds, at Park House, on Summer East Sands and on Shored Hill. Number two, weigh the need for equality for the Caster Grounds, Park House Centre and associated ground road costs. Number three, shine the light on youth pride by working up the castle in rainbow colours for the duration of Pride Month. And number four, create a series of Pride Month columns focusing on education, history and pride within our community. Youth pride isn't just one of the benefits, it's a community movement. With the year round focus on education, youth pride provides resources and training within our local schools and beyond. This year is the 50th year of pride being celebrated in the UK and the second year of youth pride being celebrated on Caster Grounds. That's what I know. With this in mind, I would like youth rapporteur to show what fierce allies we can be and also issue the following statement. This June, the S T C will mark Pride Month by supporting and celebrating the achievements of local activists and educators. These inspirational allies are committed to ensuring that every individual in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity or sex characteristics, receives an equal opportunity to live their truth with freedom from discrimination. So that is what I am proposing. You don't have to agree with me, but I really hope you do, and yeah.
Thank you, Shaun.
Yeah, I think, like, the need is a no brainer, none of these things are hurting anybody and they are going to be exceptionally beneficial to a lot of people in our community. And they know that youth is a safe place, or they know that, you know, they're accepted. I know people personally that whose lives have been changed by youth, you know, being more understanding and accepting of people. And it's, it's a big thing in flying these flags, because, you know, hurting no one and benefiting.
Okay. Katie, I'll continue.
I really agree with what the school are back. For the whole of June, just as a note, there's also the fact that you're going to leave here. And then you have to make some sort of negotiation of the highlights of the test. Do you have two flags?
I have done some research on flag flying. There are protocols, there are plenty of laws, but certainly protocols in the government advice. You can fly two flags from a flag hole. There's a set of precedences over how that would work, so the Union flag will always go on top. If you're flying two national flags, they should be led, so you can't fly two national flags on the same flag hole. Now, I know it wasn't a resolution, but it was of a mayor or, and after some consultation, so fly the Ukrainian flag. So you have to think what you do there, because you want a Union flag, a Ukrainian flag and a Pride flag. So things are achievable, but you will have to think through the various implications of the messages and the community issues.
Okay, thank you. I'll just go down here actually.
Yeah, I explored this, I think what's worked very well is that, I think that last year, youth pride was nationally recognised as being the way to own pride though, in a town. Incredibly successful, incredibly inclusive, and what was done in the period of time that it took was phenomenal. So therefore, you know, as a council, you know, it is what Shaun suggested, I probably could do more. But at the moment, this is what we've been asked. But I think there is potential for us to do more as well. I don't know, I, as long as we get the flags right. We're all about flags, as long as we get that right, no problem.
Thank you, Shaun, that's great. Peter? Oh, Katie, sorry, like, otherwise it's... Devolve the exact order of the flags and practicalities to, and is the sign up to the staff that you have to do? Or are you just, you're excited to sign up on this one together?
Well, I guess so.
Yeah, thank, the council of the year, I think, I think the third one, to weigh the fees, pay all the way to youth pride, which would be a step away from previous policy for everyone in the group, I think.
Well, actually, there, a deal has been done in so and so, we've had more free advertising offered back. So they, we won't be charging for the council wardens, because we've actually got an advertising deal for council weddings, which would have cost us more. So in my sense...
So that's all about actually saving that, is what I'm asking.
And just to add to that, I think the simple thing to remember here is that the reason why pride has seen it as such an important event last year is because it was free. And most other pride actually had to pay in some way to attend, or is entertaining, et cetera. And the reason, as I say, it was so successful and seems to be in the way of writing actually, is because it was free. And the reason they can do it free is because we will prepare and support them to do it. So it is really important from that point of view.
Yeah. Thank you, okay. So your proposals, Shaun?
I said it, and I proposed it, I was there.
Propose in favor of these? I'll bring it in now, we've been saying it.
We go on that one.
I will think of that. Thank you very much, Shaun. Thank you, everyone. Please allow me. Right, nineteen, when you're internal, I've probably timed it in turn, so, yeah. Yes, I'll get that one. And so I propose that we extend the meeting up to half nine, and get seats on the seat. Thank you, propose. Did I say, did I, sorry?
No, it was clearly, I did.
Okay. Okay, so, nineteen, to agree the terms and reference for the childcare provision forum and consider a change to its name, so on the top of that terms and references here. I'm going to hand over to Katie, I think she'll say a few words on it.
So, after we had our first meeting, especially with issues raised by the public in terms of digital inclusivity and also those who don't have digital inclusivity, that we felt like we probably need to do more than just look at childcare. There was also potentially work for adult care as well, that is on a very similar path. And so we're trying to keep incredibly focused, that concept, in remaining in this inclusion forum. And really, the main priority, we still have priority on childcare and then adult care, but then we will just be then going away to research further barriers of inclusion as well to council and the status of the public, and then to potentially go on then to budget improvement of those findings and as, as we may need to. So that, that's the idea of having this forum as more than necessarily just for childcare. Yeah, that, that's really good.
Thank you, Katie, yes, Simon.
Yes, it came from, we were discussing what we were trying to achieve through the childcare bit, because I was conscious that, to some people, we're not having a discussion, I felt that like we were just trying to get from the child. So when you sort of found out why we were, you know, that was such a fit, because lots of people on the council and members of the public would maybe would come as part of the childcare initiatives all that, we could maybe, if we're going to be that, then by the way, and if we became talking about what barriers to, on the council, council meeting, equation, council business, rather than just, you know, someone who gets something to do at the council, which is never, to never what it is, actually, we were talking about, this was always kind of the idea that was in there was how can we make this council as inclusive wherever it is possible.
Brilliant. Thank you, Shaun.
Yes, Shaun. There is a point I would first, whoops. I'm sorry, sorry. So, I just want to reiterate what these I said. So the idea of youth inclusion forum is just about how we can break down barriers and wider participation for councillors and then the wider community to actually engage in the council business in a more equitable way. Because, as you see historically, there's people that have love, that are very time rich, and there's people maybe who work full time, or they may have dependents, so, yeah, I think this might give us a bit of space to work with, not just childcare, but other kind of barriers and reassess.
Thank you, Shaun. Case?
Can we just mention, in terms of tying up items, because previous item has given this, potentially this forum, another task around the food and activities programme. So if you want to, if this forum is going to be the lead on that, it does need adding.
Yeah, just going to that point then, I suppose, really, although that was, it was mentioned, but based on the current terms and records of what this forum is for, that's well outside the schedule list. You'd have to change, you'd have to change what this forum is, if you want them to do that work, you're going to have to change what this is, because it's not in there.
Okay. Katie?
Well, what I would suggest in my notes line is that we can support the childcare leads, you know, the children who service leads as a forum. Maybe that, that might be a way, because it's not necessarily, because they're going to be needing a lot on this anyway, especially the diversity, we're needing a lot of this, it's probably our parenting. So maybe that could be a way of, why to... Uh, so maybe that could be a way of, uh, why to.
But what, what, what we said was that we were going to give this forum the authority, I think, to, to engage with project management in order to deliver.
But that was not a resolution.
It's not the example, um, although when it came up, that was, it was, it was set, this would be for you to do it. Well, it's clearly well that, it was not in the agreement, this forum to do that, and then I should have formed it. You'd have to change it. That's not what this forum is for.
Go to your fire system, the only. Sorry, I think, but it's not going to run right out of it.
Well, I feel it's wrong to put that that we need to at least pass this so we can get on and actually do the work of the forum. Um, and if that means I have to talk with the representatives of the, and staff in regards to what that means for the, the end goal, then we can do that and they'll go to the U of S to do that, as it's about, like, ensuring your project gets done. Basically, that's what insurance does do, so.
Okay.
There's a, there's a question for me, to the people on the forum, are you prepared to do that? Because that work that was, is there to include that, this is a program? If you are prepared to do that and do the self operation and support the project manager, then it would be cleaner to change the standard reference over now, say that, that would be really good. If you're not prepared to do it, then, then absolutely you can say that.
Because otherwise, if you don't have them there, you're looking to do this straight away, you're never doing anything to do it.
To be honest, if you're not right in the project, we've got a project manager during the next, no, we've got, there won't be a project manager. I, I can't do it. I won't have the time or the, where we're not, not ignoring it.
Okay, and, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, coming to this, add it. The coming to this add it is a description of the, so we are breaking the barriers to attending council meetings and in the day to day, facilitating, um, the activity. Food situation. So much, it's, it's maybe two separate things. The project manager, you work with childcare, it's a form of self operation and a self inspection. And so you have something to, the council reports. So you can just say whatever it was on the page of and the day to day operation or oversight and direction, the project, yeah.
Well, you, you can't, uh, you can't cut that in time.
Stop.
We're obviously, um.
Yeah, I was talking about, you know, I was talking about more of as a set of operation and stuff.
But isn't this more effectively going to be given the responsibility of the time, the right terms and reference, the project manager? Surely, because nobody else is doing it.
That has to be the first task.
Yeah. So, so it needs to be a bit more in it, probably than that, because what you guys are going to do is effectively commission the project manager for all the work that we've already done. So it needs to be in there in order to use the project.
Okay.
Could, sorry, can you not just say the word in the song?
Much, yes.
I don't know if I cover it.
It says, um, the project manager will work with the childcare division forum to do that self operation or oversight and direction. And so either the oversight committee or the council. And what tells us is that they need to do initiatives and start asking the right.
Because you've got to work with them, you've got to report them.
Right, terms and reference, so project manager.
Yeah, and oversee the invention or whatever.
So, why you have, I've just written something down, but, I think it's correct as we go. So I've just added strong terms and reference to liaise and write the terms and reference. So it's to liaise, to liaise with and write the terms and reference for the project manager of the Food and Activities Programme. And we have good offices as well from there.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it'd be appropriate for them to liaise with the project manager because we haven't got one yet. And what we've got to do is write the job description, put it, advertise it and then send it to him. Because otherwise what you could give is chicken and egg. So you're going to go out and ask the project manager to write his own terms and reference to employ himself. I'm not sure that's right.
From time to time, with you, just thinking about the discussions I've already had with people. Um, because of the time constraints and the whole process of advertising out there and all those things, we had people that we've looked at within the community that do this kind of thing, already. Um, associated with me inside and this is like that and others. Um. I suppose, my, my perspective, the project manager job description and person's qualifications is standard, but we've already got. What needs to sit behind that is in this document, there's a description of the ambition and that might be, um, taking that piece of that work out and saying this is the ambition of the council. Um, the job of this project manager is to assess the deliverability of that asset and come up with, you know, implementation options. I don't think it's, I don't think it's, it's, it would be too tricky to kind of put a, you know, a piece of text inside, you know, to the, the project manager. Okay, so.
Yes, yes, please. If I try it on just teams, if you want to go with it, but I think there's some, there's some applies. So on the first forum bit, very top, after I recommend any access to council. Uh, so just before that, it's also to ensure the delivery of childcare projects, which is obviously quite different result, which also means that, and then that, that's the aim, is to ensure the delivery of the projects. Uh, and then in the forum, we can have, we win that, under first thing is childcare projects. And within that, you can say, uh, to aid staff in the, uh, the, the job distribution, the, uh, brief for the project manager. Um, and then to work with the project manager throughout the project, basically. And to report any findings to the council or the project manager.
Okay, I have a second. Yeah, it's all the things you want to have. I'm trying to write it down.
I don't know. But I can do myself.
Yes.
The work's not done.
No.
So we just add the phrase of the original proposal to hire and work with a project manager to deliver that project.
We thought you'd.
And then.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there is more.
We still talk about terms and reference for.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I can't read, and I think they've got the reading. They've got that.
Yeah.
I think that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I close out.
Okay. Right, okay. So we do what we need and then, um, okay. Right. All those in paper, I'm afraid I haven't got it in writing. So that's.
We've got, you have that.
We just, yeah, checked that you're happy with what's.
Well, I think you're, you're clear in what you have to do.
Yeah, okay, so all those in paper.
Wait, there's, there's.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Neither do we.
I'm on the job.
Right, okay, so we've been on, I hate to hear this, but we have standing orders for a reason, that's to protect us all when we're standing around the table. And the idea is that one councillor can speak at a time, so they get a fair crack of the whip. But at the beginning of that previous item, councillor Purchase addressed the town park under a breath, suggesting he didn't have the inclination to deliver on resolutions and he tried to defend himself and moved on very quickly. And I just wondered if you might offer councillor Purchase the opportunity to, uh, apologize for withdrawing that remark because I obviously can't affect him.
I apologize and withdraw it. Right, okay. Um, committee membership, committee members. Um, so let the votes of members for the following committees of the council. Um, oversight committee, planning committee and staff committee. Just here, all the current members on those. And I suppose in the view of time, I think we just want to know that is there anybody that wishes to change that's currently in front of us? Katie, first of all.
Uh, I believe there was actually other councils that were in the staff and committee. Um, and I don't feel I've been in too much, just because everyone else is staffing and using the childcare. My topic is eleven o'clock, uh, so I'll get to my own reflection in a bit.
Okay, thank you very much, Katie. I'm gonna, I have no idea if I have it, I'm just gonna go round it.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a draw, but it's actually.
Okay. Okay, Sam?
I, I've spoken of the issue, I'm not sure I have any other stuff with you, it's. I was, I came to the first meeting, which might, which typically it tempts us that meeting. I wasn't on this time.
Yeah, it should be this. Yeah, I know what you're telling me.
It's me, the deputy mayor.
Yeah, you should have done that, so. That was a problem, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't that, he isn't the boss, I'm with you.
Okay.
I left my committee as much as I actually mean, cleaned it and find a fascinating eye every time. So I need to step down from that.
Okay. And I wanted to put on a little bit of stock. Okay. And do you want me to do, go ahead, yeah, Tony?
Uh, I'd like to put your, Alan and Starke.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Peter.
Yeah, so I, I can't, I couldn't find the list, I'm not sure where I am, but I, I did intend to withdraw from planning, Starke and oversight.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Sean, um, who, my name can be outside the end, please, and that's all I have to say. Sorry, Sean. I don't know, there's no one, thank you. It's all right, it's always that one, but if we're changing things.
I see. Okay, we've got all of that. So we need to, we've got two spaces on the oversight committee then.
Yes.
My computer.
Yep.
Um, I'll try, I'll do one at a time, shall I? Um, so oversight committee, we've got two spaces. Would anybody that's not currently there like to be on the side? If not, okay.
Starke, I would just actually mention that the deputy mayor is my, uh, they actually chose it where they have the oversight committee. And it's my share of oversight. So you are to back on for this one.
Are you wondering if that was not something, because you know, there's a. I've just talked to Simon Brown about the fact that he was on it for as deputy mayor, what does that mean?
Indeed, indeed, um.
You can say anyone. Yeah.
If he stays on it at the moment, um, we would be up to capacity by implication. Um, arguably, you should come off a bit because you're, you were there as deputy mayor.
We've got one space, we've got one space still.
We've got two spaces, sorry, we've got, no, we've got three spaces.
Katie, Tony and Peter are sitting down.
Right, so we have three spaces.
And Simon Berry will be.
Simon Berry, if it goes on, it's just two spaces, so we have two vacancies.
One, 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 one.
Technically, sorry, technically, Simon, this Simon is not on it because, because he's not deputy mayor.
I'm happy to talk to you.
That's not my answer. We should have two vacancies.
Okay.
If there's space, then I might go back on it. It's because I knew that other people wanted to and that obviously because it's childcare sorted, then I was necessarily going to be able to show. So that's my idea.
So, so yes, your council, um, also good resignation from the committee.
Yeah.
And you have one vacancy.
Yeah, okay. Just obviously be aware of that, be there. So one, one, okay. So any other things do we need to do, nine of these problems?
Well, you have one each question of interest. Uh, you don't have to have nine, um, but nine you thought you.
Yes, it's actual. So any, uh, so we've got Philippa, Simon Berry. I forget you've got. Yes, very true, yeah, very true. What happens about that? Sorry to ask that, let's do it again.
If, yeah, so you, yes, we can hold a vacancy, that's actually a hackable way, because we haven't just had to hold a vacancy. But we have one vacancy, one.
Yes. Yeah, okay, and finally, so Tony, Lisa and Kelly have all sat down. So any other people interested in that? So what's that, there's sort of six, isn't there?
Yeah, three to record.
Okay. Okay, so I hope that some of our absentees might join in. Yeah, no, nobody else? No, okay. I can't get, I can't get the key. No, that's a struggle that day in time.
If I go back on the committee and there's less than three people and I can make it, is it better than not or not?
Tom?
So if you would, uh, go.
Um, yeah, and yes, it's a third of the voting members, which is mine. I don't think that number shows.
It doesn't matter if you haven't gone before, if that's what, what it is, it's that, can I just? What I would say, in all seriousness, the planning committee, the local office, has the most direct impact, week to week, on, on the town. And if you're on it, you need to do it. Like, you can't just turn up, because as a guy who's been on it this year now, it's, you, there's a lot of technical stuff in the planning. And a lot of it's quite tricky and you, and you are considering it's pretty serious stuff. It's, you know, to keep in mind, it's, it's houses, it's extensions, it's, I, I don't think it'd be reasonable to just sort of pitch up and say, I'll just.
I was expecting to do my homework on that, but I would mean, I would say it's going to be useful, but, you know, I'm getting that.
If, if you are here, you need to do it, to be honest, otherwise it's.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Uh, is it, given this, the fact that it seems to be particularly unpopular or whatever, um, there is the provision for non-councils to be on this.
Yeah.
I just wonder if this is a, we can consider, uh, if, if, if there might be members of the public, I don't know who, would be prepared to serve.
Take that away, because we need to, I think we need to put terms and reference.
And so the council.
They have a massive housing survey to do as well, just putting that out there.
Okay, right, not that we're, okay, so are you happy with our few people on there?
Are we going for starting or are we waiting until we have?
We did that.
We could do that.
Oh, no, we didn't vote.
I didn't think you voted, sorry.
No, that's true, sorry. Okay, and so. Casey's back on it, isn't she? So it's just the addition of Philippa and Simon Berry, Simon Brown.
Time to go to talk about.
Yes, I can't say that.
Yeah, one vacancy.
Yeah, and Philippa.
So.
Thank you, so in that. Thank you, second that, yeah, so all those in favour of Philippa, so on the side.
Do we all have people back on?
Sorry.
I don't know, do you have a dog?
Tell me after that, on the construction.
It will probably be.
Staffing committee, do you insist on?
Right, it would be, it would be wise, yes, I think it quite takes it on, is to confirm the membership as.
Right, Martin Dory, Simon Bellamy, Matt Tane, Paul Tilley, Robert Ullin, Simon Bellamy, Philip and Purchase, and Katie Good.
I made my proposal for that.
Same. Small, small, yeah.
So that's oversight?
Yeah.
Staffing?
Simon Bellamy, Alex Lewis, Mike Dory, Shaun Deary, Thomas Sullivan. Oh, are you, are you going on?
Martin Dory.
Not Martin, did I say Martin?
No, not.
Which one are you on, Tracy? Oh, planning.
Planning, I said staffing.
Sorry, no, no, you just said that, you just said.
No.
Yeah, but you just said staffing, and then it's not the real thing.
We need staffing.
Right, we've got all three, we've got all three, so.
We know staffing, yeah.
All right, okay.
We do planning now, planning.
Simon Bellamy, Alex Lewis, Mike Dory, Shaun Deary, Thomas Sullivan, Philip and Purchase.
I propose, okay, thank you, all those in favour? Thank you, and then oversight committee, last of all.
Simon Bellamy, Alex Lewis, Simon Brown, Shaun Deary, Katie Good, Jackie Diffie, Martin Dory, Philip and Purchase, Matt Tane, Robert Ullin.
I propose, um, thank you, all those in favour? Okay, those populated, uh, twenty-one, confirm the roles of the councils in what members are scheduled to outside bodies now. Are we not, we're coming back to the outside bodies, Tom, are you there?
No, no, right, as these other than, sorry, the side, the council, uh, the Royal has stood down, was crime, community safety and housing. So if you wish to continue to have meetings on those, it would be helpful, we don't have that in.
Uh, I did have a question in the garden, uh, United C C T P group was, was that the position in that would be difficult to be on the C C T P group anymore? Or you've not turned us on down to C C T P?
That's a separate outside.
Well, I'm happy to, uh, through the deck, I'm happy to continue with the roles as representatives on outside bodies, but I don't wish you to continue to be council.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it's whether, at this meeting, anybody wants to, or either of those who, you've got like the councillors that are present as well. No, not I.
No, I was going to, I don't know if this is anything to do with you, but, um, Jackie and I have been working most together on arts and culture. Um, and I don't know if you need Jackie to be back for this, or if we really have to do it, but, um, uh, but doing that as a joint thing, uh, maybe joining Jackie on that, uh, as I mentioned, but I don't know what the process is, if it needs to wait, it's fine.
Yeah, that's okay, confirm the roles of the councillors.
So can I propose then that Simon joins, Jackie Diffie, Alex joins, to roll from here on? All those in favour? Yes.
I'd like to stand for the economic development, I can, yes.
Oh, yes.
I think you're pleased, Shaun?
Okay, I'm all this.
Right, is that everything you need, Keith, for that part?
Yes, I was interested in potentially, uh, leaving one of those areas, so your talk was about crime.
Crime, community safety and housing.
And housing, and, and our, and.
You're just doing.
It's a joint event?
With Simon Bellamy.
Okay, cool, so it's added, not added, sorry, I was.
I might work.
Um, then I would mind stepping up for crime, everybody else is interested in that. So that's quite important. Okay, so can I propose that Katie is, um, new in council for crime and community safety then?
Second?
Thank you, and all those in favour?
Can we just, uh, all other places, yes?
Please. Propose, propose that this list is as is in purpose, and the same as the other, please, uh, let me, thank you, all those in favour of this? Okay. Ooh, four minutes. Okay, um, twenty-two, authorized ceiling of the lease, we've had a change, usually sealed here. Very nice, huge top. Um, okay, yes.
Propose that, please.
I'll second that, all those in favour? Okay, all the two, I think, and all those guests, and I've seen. Uh, the financial report, schedule of payments made, twenty-first to May, from the fifth of May, can I propose?
Probably no, 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 though it is, it is late from twenty-first to two, if you will, it's.
Oh. Oh, yes.
I'm not quite sure, and we've got a payment.
So, yeah, okay, so propose, and notice it. All those in favour? Thank you. And the schedule of payments to be made, May twenty-twenty-two. I propose that we. All those in favour? Thank you, that myself. Close, the time. We're getting a.